Coming up next on ECN, a regularly scheduled meeting of the Edinburgh City Council. On the council, Mayor Ramiro Garza Jr., Councilmember Daniel Dan Diaz, Councilmember Jason Belion, Councilmember Johnny Garcia, and Mayor Pro Tem David White. Sitting in as advisor, City Manager Myra El Ayala, and City Attorney Omar Ochoa. And now live from Edinburgh City Hall, the Edinburgh City Council.
Got to have the mic on. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. By my watch, it is six oh one of this Edinburgh City Council meeting. Today is June sixth, twenty twenty-three. I'm going to just establish a quorum at this time. We have four, excuse me, three members of our council present. Councilmember Dan Diaz is out of town, is unable to join us today, so we do have quorum. Before we start prayer, I would just like to ask for a moment of silence for our former mayor Rudy de la Viña that passed away since we last met. So if you could just join me in a moment of silence, please, at this time. Thank you. I'm going to ask at this time Pastor Arturo Chapa from the Apostolic Assembly to join us and lead us in prayer.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say scripture before I do our prayer for today. In First Timothy, chapter two, verse one and two, Paul is telling Timothy to pray for the leadership that is so important that we do that. So I'll see the two scriptures. Paul is saying to Timothy, "I exhort you therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty." Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you at this moment. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for this meeting that our mayor and the commissioners will have. We thank you for the mayor and the commission. Commissioners are here today, and those that are absent, bless them as well. We ask that you give them the wisdom, the understanding, the direction, and the anointing. You have appointed them to be the leadership of our community. We ask that you give them the direction that they need for the benefit of the whole community, and everything that is done is done in proper order according to your will, my God. Bless all the employees and all the citizens of our community. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now proceed with item two, which is certification of public notice.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The meeting was posted in accordance to the Texas Open Meetings Act on June second, twenty twenty-three, at twelve twenty-five P. M., sir.
Thank you. Item three is disclosure of a conflict of interest?
Yes, sir. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. If there is a conflict, the member can't participate or vote on the item. Are there any conflicts to disclose?
No, sir, no.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, I have several items here under Mayor's Report. Just very briefly, I just wanted to advise the council and the members of the public. We have been meeting with different mayors in South Texas. We've signed a, they call it a compact, Mayor's Alliance, just to kind of collaborate and see how it is that we can work together. I think it's a great thing here for our city, and I believe our city secretary received a copy of that, so we're happy to share that with everyone. Also, we attended the Stormwater Planning and Management Conference, and this is a regional event that took place. And the only reason I wanted to mention it is because we're working a lot of drainage projects throughout our city, and I did find out that there's a lot of funding available. So I just want to ask our city manager staff to follow up on all those programs available with the Water Development Board. I believe some of our bonds we issued for drainage, we can also apply to offset some of those costs, so hoping we can follow up on that. And then the last item is just hurricane preparedness efforts. Hurricane season has kicked off, started June first. We did have an event to highlight that and just to advise the public to be prepared. I believe on our website, if I'm not mistaken, there's a list of information. If you're looking to see what is it that you need to prepare for this upcoming season, you know, please look into that and help us, help you. That's how I'll say it, because it's a community effort in preparing for this storm season. And that's all I have at this time. We have City Managers' Report?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. I just want to inform the public that the City Council is part of our preliminary process for the budget. We will be having two scheduled budget work sessions. One will be held June the twelfth of twenty, this year, and then June the thirteenth, and both will be held at six P. M. So I would just like to inform the council that we have scheduled two budget work sessions, and then it's open to the public as well.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to proclamations and recognitions at this time, item six. I'll start with item A. The first item is to proclaim, recognizing, proclamation recognizing June twenty twenty-three as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Do we have someone here to receive this proclamation? And if you are here, if you can step up to the podium at this time while I read the proclamation. All right, so we have Elder Abuse Awareness Month, June of twenty twenty-three, and it reads as follows, "Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city every day, enriching our community by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. Whereas as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas abuse affected more than one hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in twenty twenty-two. Whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. And whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it is important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Garza Jr., Mayor of the City of Edinburgh, Texas, by the power vested in me by law, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-three as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and urge everyone to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities."
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Frank Kiman. As I work with Adult Protective Services, I have my coworkers here. Basically, on behalf of Adult Protective Services, we would like to thank you for allowing us to be here in this proclamation. I appreciate everything you do, our community, especially the city of Edinburgh, as well as our first responders here in the community. Without you guys, we can't, it would be hard for us to go ahead and not reach out to our patients, or the clients. So again, we want to thank you on behalf of Adult Protective Services. In anything that we can help you with, we're here to help.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all y'all do in the community as it relates to elders. We have a proclamation. We go down there to take a quick picture with you. That's good. All right. We're going to move on to the next proclamation. It's a presentation, a proclamation recognizing Mia Rincones as the Boys and Girls Clubs of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, twenty twenty-three Youth of the Year. All right. Where is she? Is she here? Don't be shy. Come on up to the podium and with the Boys and Girls Club. I'm going to, while you walk to the podium, I'm going to read the proclamation at this time. Mia Rincones, Boys and Girls Clubs of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, twenty twenty-three Youth of the Year. Whereas Mia Rincones, a well-rounded individual, is a senior at Idea College Prep and was named the Boys and Girls Clubs of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, twenty twenty-three Youth of the Year. And whereas Ms. Rincones represented Edinburgh in Austin and placed top four out of twenty-three candidates in the state of Texas based on her superior leadership skills, academic achievement, overcoming obstacles, and outstanding service to the Boys and Girls Clubs and the community of Edinburgh. Whereas a loyal member of the Boys and Girls Club of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, for ten years, this talented young woman has given freely of her time and energy to club activities. She is a positive role model for her peers. And whereas Ms. Rincones has consistently sought to develop her organizational and leadership skills, through attendance at club programs, she has gained valuable experience and perspective on issues facing teens in her community. And whereas through her devotional efforts, Mia Rincones has distinguished herself as a vital and valued member of the community. Her remarkable achieved accomplishments, excuse me, as a young woman, point to an even brighter future, and it is indeed fitting at this time to honor her for her many contributions to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, and to our community. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Garza Jr., Mayor of the City of Edinburgh, Texas, by the power vested in me by law, do hereby issue this proclamation to Mia Rincones, Boys and Girls Club of Edinburgh, Rogan Valley, twenty twenty-three Youth of the Year. The Edinburgh City Council would like to congratulate you and wish you continued success in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Hello.
Good evening.
I would like to say thank you to everybody who supported me and everybody who helped me accomplish this goal. I believe that the Boys and Girls Club helped me throughout so much of my life and did so much to help me. I can thank so many people, but we wouldn't be here till twelve. But I want to thank everybody who's here today and the mayor and all the city council. Thank you so much.
So my name is Daisy Martinez, and I'm fortunate to be CEO. It's been a year, just completed it, and only second. And honestly, Mia is just, come here, Mia. Mia is just one of over three thousand seven hundred club members that we service, and so it's just a testament of all the great programs that my team actually does. We now have thirty-two team members that are employed by the city, of course, with the Boys and Girls Club of Edinburgh. And honestly, I'm so gracious and so thankful for all the support that you all have shown us. I welcome each and every one of you, even everyone that's in here today, to stop by our club. We just actually started our summer camp services where we're providing services to over two hundred and sixty-five club members, Monday through Friday, from seven forty-five to five thirty. We do provide breakfast and lunch as well at no cost to our kids. So I challenge each and every one of you that's in here today, you know, stop by, spend some time with our kids, whether it's shooting hoops, reading a book, doing STEM activities. I know you all were there last summer and I was so grateful for it. But honestly, without the support of the city and all our sponsors and donors and stuff, we wouldn't be able to do what we do today. And so thank you for helping us make an impact in club members, just like Mia. And so thank you, Mom and Dad, for trusting us with her as well, and so we're here if you ever need anything.
Thank you. Thank you for all y'all do, and congratulations, young lady. Wish you all the very best. All right. Congratulations again. Okay, I'm gonna come back to item C, council. We're just waiting on something on this recognition, but we'll come right back to it. So we're going to move to item D. At this time, we'll come back to item C. This is a presentation, also special presentation certificates of recognition to the following twenty twenty-three Navy ROTC scholarship recipients. As I call your name, you could come up to the podium. And we have the major here also, Major, if you don't mind coming up to the podium. I'm going to name them Alejandro Martinez, we have Angelina Saldivar, and Christian Juarez. Ladies and gentlemen, let's please give these young students a hand. They've received some scholarships to to attend college by way of ROTC Navy Scholarship. And we just wanted to recognize them this evening. We have some certificates here to present to y'all. But Major, if you would be kind to just share and introduce them, please.
Yes, I'm Major Gonzalez. I'm the instructor at Edinburgh North High School. And we have a total of seven that received this scholarship. However, this year, Angelina's out of town right now. This year, we got three. So this is our future leaders from our community. They have the potential to become general officers, in this case, in the Navy, I'm Army. So fortunately, that's what we've been producing. So they got, I'll start with Christian Juarez. He's going to Testiga University. He applied for the Navy. He's going to be a Navy pilot. So he'll be there upon graduation. He'll receive a commission in the United States Navy. It's an ensign. And then move to the pilot school. To my left is Alex Martinez. She's going to Memphis University. Same thing, as soon as she gets her four-year degree, she'll be going to nuclear engineering. That's what her, so she'll be an ensign as well. So meanwhile, the Navy decided to get a scholarship of two hundred thousand dollars to go to the school, and so everything pretty much paid for.
Wow.
I just want to say thank you. It's an honor to be here. I've stood in the back and watched, and I can say there's clearly a culture here of supporting our young men and women, whether it's in the civilian sector or military. You've provided a foundation of excellence, and it will be no worry that they'll finally make their way back after seeing the world. So outstanding job with your support in the community.
Thank you so much. We're going to go join you down there and give you these certificates of recognition.
And Mayor, that was Commander O'Neill from the, right commander? Commander, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Stacy O'Neill from the Navy.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. And the future is bright indeed here in our city, so thanks to these young students.
You're welcome to come.
All right. We're going to go back to item C. I believe we're ready and prepared to present also a certificate of recognition for congressional nomination and appointment to the United States Military Academy West Point to Jimena Falcon Mesa. Let's give her a hand also, who's here joining us. And I know you're not here alone. You have your family here, so, family, don't be so shy. Please come up and join young Jimena. She's received a full scholarship to attend West Point. I don't know if this has happened in this way before, and, you know, congratulations to you and, of course, your family for this honor to be able to go here and to have this scholarship provided to you. We wish you all the very best, and we have a special certificate of recognition to provide to you this evening. And I know you were recognized by U.S. Senator Cornyn, is that correct? Recently in San Antonio also?
Yes.
So I know you're going to do well. You have a lot of support, and we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I just want to say that I'm living proof of the saying, "It takes a village towards a child." Obviously, that goes beyond my family and friends, but it also goes into the city, ECI SD, which is a great district, obviously, and if it hadn't been for the support of Army instructors, senior Army instructors, and like I said, family and friends, the guidance of grandpa and my family behind me, none of this would be possible. And I will be attending, thankfully, the United States Military Academy to study nuclear engineering as one of the few Hispanic females. So that is a great, great representation of not only the valley, but of the city of Edinburgh, so thank you.
Wow. Congratulations.
And we have our very own Sergeant Baritiz here to join in and be supportive here as well. Thank you.
Nice. Congratulations again. We're going to move on to public comments at this time.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The Edinburgh City Council allows for a specific portion of the City Council meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. I'll be taking time. Please note, the public comment period is not interactive. The council may not respond to public comments. The first public comment, Mayor and Council, is for McClarity regarding taxpayers' money.
Good evening. Council members, looking through the agenda, I am not surprised by the fact that we are one of the largest counties with the poorest population. The items on the agenda can be divided into those that want to make some modification that would help them to make more money, and those that want something just for them. The fact that thirty percent of our families are living in poverty and the average household income is fifty-three thousand dollars not entering into this conversation. The first premise of planning is how much you can afford, and next is how to stay in your budget. Looking at the property values that families are having to deal with because of your spending, the reason elected officials are so bad at making decisions is because there are no consequences. They cannot see the really bad ideals if it runs over them. The only one that sees the results are the family and that have lost or will be losing their homes because they cannot pay the rising cost. Building a high-rise parking facility where there are no businesses is dumb. But if you sell ten million dollars in bonds and then halfway through the design phase decide that it is not enough, that's even dumber. But wait, it could get dumber. If you decide to hire the firm to perform a need assessment that will ultimately build the facility, that doesn't seem too, too good, or spend twenty million dollars on parking and you do not get reelected because the families lost their homes and had to move into an apartment. They still can vote. Remember that. You should not, you should not underestimate how upset people are about increasing home values, and they know exactly why this is happening. The next two items on the agenda concerns a vehicle and two bridges. In reference to the two bridges, the answer is, should be known, four hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We should not be spending almost a half a million dollars to walk across the ditch we created. Golfers are just going to have to walk a little farther. Who and how many people will be using these bridges? In reference to a new vehicle, create a vehicle pool. Each department head should not have an individual vehicle, fifty-two thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Isn't that what I said the average home income is? And we're talking about a twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe LS. I'm sorry, but during COVID, I think the city bought lots of trucks. I see them out all the time with one person in them. How about doubling those up and use one of the vehicles that we already own? But fifty-two thousand, do you know how much more that will cost our taxes? And finally, what happened to spending a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to lobby? And I gave you pictures tonight at the corner of McCall and Chapin. I wish y'all go by and look at that. That is the ugliest thing I've ever seen.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Ms. McClarity would also like to speak on items eight C, ten A, twelve B, and twelve F.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
The next public comment is Magdal Castle, invitation to the Filipino and Juneteenth festivals.
Of Cultural Arts. This year, we're hosting two events. One is this weekend. The next one is the following weekend. The first one is the Filipino Festival. This is an annual festival that happens with our Filipino community in Edinburgh. And the following one is the Juneteenth Festival, happens with the African-American community here in Edinburgh. Both of these events, the first one, the Filipino Festival, starts on, at six P. M. here at the auditorium. It's followed by a food tasting at the Food Truck Park. And then we will have some dance performance, a car show, a fashion show. And then the Juneteenth Festival is going to happen next weekend on June seventeenth, starting at four. starting at four PM at the city auditorium. And we will march with a brass band, Louisiana style band, all the way to the amphitheater to kick off the festival where we'll have our annual Juneteenth Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next public comment is Bill Carlson regarding the proposed acceptance of Ebony.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, I thank you so much for all your services. I've seen you so many times in so many different locations. I know you put so much effort. It's a full-time job. Thank you. City manager, our assistant city manager, we're very diligently on our five-year plan for Ebony Hills Golf Course. I've been blessed to know from the golf board committee that we're in the black. We've generated more money in the last two years than any other time, two years in a row. Plus, right now, this year, we're well over twenty-five percent above what we did the last two years. So this includes Los Lagos as well as Ebony. We've got all these kids. We have, I think, nine high schools. We have nine junior highs for sure. And we have two golf courses, one that allows one school, district, to use their facility. The rest is on this city. And Ebony is a big part of that as well. So we have winter tourists that come in, spend, I don't know how much money, I wish I could tell you. But they come in, they love Ebony, it fits them. As well as these ninth grade or eighth grade kids that go out there and play golf on Ebony every day. On Sunday, we have family members that go out and they enjoy themselves with their kids that are just learning how to play and they love it. We have football fields, we have soccer fields, we have baseball fields. We only have these two golf courses. This bridge, both of these bridges are so very important. They're more than what the golf course needs. It's used for many different things, as well as, you know, what we're hoping Ebony is used for. Fourth of July events, the things that will generate money to five oh one C threes that help indigents here in this community all the time. So please approve these two bridges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
The last public comment is Beatriz Flores regarding fencing. Oh, they left.
Okay, no problem. If you see him come back, let me know and I'm happy to call him back, so. All right, that's all the public comments. I'm gonna move on to item eight. At this time, we have several public hearings. Item A is, I will open up this public hearing at this time. For anyone that wishes to comment on this item, this has to do with an ordinance providing for the rezoning requests for, from residential multifamily and urban district to commercial district. This is for a property located at twenty-six oh seven West Freddie Gonzalez Drive. The hearing is now open and anyone in the public that wishes to make any public comments, you may do so at this time. If there are no public comments, I will close. We're on eight A. If there's, did you have a comment, ma'am? I'm sorry. Okay, there's no other public comments, I will close the public hearing, council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item B, I will open up this public hearing also. This is to consider an ordinance providing for the rezoning request from agriculture and open space district to residential primary district. This is for a property located at one sixteen Wilson Avenue. The hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to make any comments to the public at this time, you may do so. All right, if there's no public comments, I will close the hearing, council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item C, I would open up this public hearing at this time also to consider ordinance providing for the rezoning request from residential suburban and commercial general districts to residential multifamily and urban district. This is a five point eight one six acre tract of land located at twelve oh one North McCall Road. The hearing is now open and anyone wishing to make comments may do so at this time.
Just have one, this is on McCall and I gave you pictures of that ugly corner that y'all allowed people. I'm hoping that when you, this has got more area, I think, what, five acres or something, that y'all are looking at what they're building, that you're not going, you know, and the traffic on McCall. We've already got big, huge subdivision there on Shunier and McCall. I think we're gonna have another one just on the south part there of House's property. More that y'all are looking at the streets and how the traffic is gonna flow.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else that would like to make any comments at this time related to item eight C for a property located at Mobile One North McCall Road? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Commissioner, good evening. Rick Salasal, the project engineer of this project. We do have a total of about seven acres on this property. It's along McCall. It is, it's gonna be, we wanna zone it for multifamily and then the business in front. The front half acre is gonna be set for a plaza. And then the back would be, it's a total of eighteen lots in this property that we're looking into, one being the commercial and then seventeen being the multifamily. Within the area, within the one mile radius, we did identify about four hundred and four acres of multifamily that's already existing due to the university being so close with about two hundred and eleven acres that are undeveloped and ready to go for development in the near future. The property right now is ingressing seven hundred, seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars of taxes, which about a thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars come to the city of Edinburgh. We did an analysis on an apartment that the lady was, in the development where the lady was talking about, Summer Winds, just on the corner of McCall and Chapin, northeast corner. We identified that one lot, the same equivalent size generates the city two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars in taxes. The same lot, including Drainage, Idalo County, STC, Edinburgh ISD, and South Texas College generates, this same lot generates eight thousand, six hundred dollars in yearly taxes. If we multiply our property, the eighteen acres, we would be generating about forty thousand dollars for the city of Edinburgh. For the seventeen lots in total, with the Drainage District, Idalo County taxes, South Texas College taxes, Edinburgh ISD, we would be generating about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in taxes just to develop this property. That excludes the business area, which is the business, the half acre lot. We calculate that is gonna bring in about twelve thousand dollars in taxes with three thousand being for the city of Edinburgh. Not only that, this will, this will benefit the city because we are gonna do this plaza and we're gonna set about three businesses. We calculate about half a million to a million dollars in sales in this plaza, which the city will get in sales tax about sixty to a hundred thousand dollars just in sales tax. We do the development. This will also create about twenty, twenty, twenty jobs for the city of Edinburgh. Just on the fact that the taxes are gonna skyrocket and the city of Edinburgh is gonna generate funds from there. We're talking a thousand, seven hundred dollars that you're currently getting to a total of about forty thousand dollars if we do this development. So that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Salasal?
Yes.
Do you know what kind of business you're gonna put in that commercial plaza?
We do have the owner here.
We are thinking something about, related to the community, things that provide services that we need since we're growing so much and we have so many needs. So anything that is suitable to the community.
Maybe a restaurant. We also talked earlier on through the project. Maybe a meat market slash small convenience store. But definitely a restaurant that can help the community in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wish to make comments on this item at this time? If not, I will close the public hearing, council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Moving on to item D, we have another public hearing that I'll open up at this time to consider ordinance providing for the rezoning request from agriculture and open space district to residential suburban district. This is for a property located at fourteen hundred East Flag Drive. The hearing is now open and anyone wishing to make comments may do so at this time. If there are no comments, I will close the public hearing, council.
Motion to approve, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is another public hearing that will open up at this time to consider the ordinance providing for the updates to the Unified Development Code. And the hearing is open for anyone that wishes to make any comments in connection with the updates to the Unified Development Code. I believe the information was included in our packet and information, is that correct? On the specific items, there's some very minor, I think, changes. And anyone in the public that wishes to make any comments may do so as it is a public hearing. Everything else, just for the record, does stay intact. These are just effects, these sections, so.
Correct.
Is there anyone here that wish to make any comments at this time on this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing, council.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion approved. This next item, ten A, council, this is to consider an appropriate action and an ordinance authorizing the issuance of revenue certificates, series twenty twenty-three, providing for the payment of said certificates within the city and resolve other matters related to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of said certificates. And for the record, this has to do with the bonds that are looking to be issued for the relocation utility lines north of Edinburgh, correct?
Yeah, it's for the, it's for the SIB loan. Yes, sir.
Council?
Motion to approve. Second.
Well, motion and a second. And we do have a comment before I take for a vote that was requested to be made. Yes, ma'am.
Well, just wanted you to explain what it was, cuz I looked up the backup and it shows year of stated maturity, twenty twenty-three. And then we go all the way down. Are we going to have this paid off by twenty fifty-three? I didn't know. I would, if you could explain.
Yeah, no, it's, so what it is, I believe we have our financial advisor and bond counsel here. But what it is, it's a issuance of thirteen million, I believe, in bonds that the city's being requested by Techstat because of the expansion of US two eighty-one, I sixty-nine. So this is all the costs associated with relocating those utilities. But I believe it's a, they're twenty-year, a thirty-year note. We have the answer to that. But it's a payment schedule that we issue and I believe it's over a thirty-year? Okay.
Just to clarify, you have the packet there, but the, what was preliminary, preliminarily discussed, and Bobby Vieri will describe it for the record. We had planned on a interest rate of about three and a half percent, but the pricing today was at two point six four. It went in your favor there. Fourteen and a half million was the borrowing. And the first principal payment has been deferred. Techstat allows up to eight years. At first, we thought maybe they were only gonna do five, but they did allow to defer the principal payment eight years out to twenty thirty-one. And again, this is callable anytime, so it can be paid down or refinanced at any time. But having said that, that deferral allows you some capacity to do other things if you need to. But again, I think a rate study is needed as well. So these are, these are taxing revenues, so the pledge is the property tax. And of course, the utilities will come in at some point to help support it.
Okay, that's the question that they came up with, twenty fifty-three. We'll all be dead.
Well, and Fern, that's what's required of us as far as the thirty years, so when we issue bonds.
Just like I said, I got a call and I couldn't answer it, so I'll let y'all do it for me.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem, ma'am. Thank you.
And June twenty-eighth, it'll close. Funds will be delivered.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. All's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item eleven A, council, I've been made aware that the quester of this variance has requested it to be tabled. So we're gonna move on. Do we need to take action on that, council?
If you wanna formally make a motion to table it, you can do that.
Okay, let's just do it formally.
Motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to table. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to order and bids, item twelve A, this is consider authorizing purchase of photo and video equipment for B and H Photo Video of New York through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing System through PEG funds in the amount of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, sixty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All's four. All's four.
Okay, so noted, yeah.
Just not feeling real well.
Item B is consider authorizing the purchase of one twenty twenty-four Chevy Tahoe from Salesby Fleet Group through TIPS USA through PEG funds in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seventy-six dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Oh, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. I know we have a comment, but go ahead, ma'am. And then there was a question by council, but go ahead. I know you wanted to.
Well, mine was, I wish y'all would have put the vehicle up there so that the public could see what their taxes and if they lose their home are paying for. And it's not anything, cuz I do not know this woman as far as just seeing her here, but how many other employees do we buy a fifty-two, almost fifty-three thousand dollar vehicle? And my thing is, how about looking at the trucks that we have? I can't believe that we have to have one, like I say, I drive a twenty eleven that was used when I bought it. And I know there are other taxpayers in Edinburgh that have the same vehicles and even less than. Y'all would think about that.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
First of all, Ms. Ledman, I just wanna ask, how many vehicles do we currently have on the media department?
Two.
Just two?
Yes.
Just to clarify a little bit, Ms. Fern, we have so many more activities going on in our city today than we had in even a year ago, that we don't have enough personnel to spread everybody apart. And we don't feel that it's right to have them use their own personal vehicle doing city business. And that's the reason for that. And I don't believe, I mean, unless I can be clarified, that I don't think we're allowed to buy used vehicles.
All right, my thing is, I know that the county has, pays car allowances, the different ones. And will she be taking this vehicle home or will it be parked in the park?
Absolutely not. And I also wanna clarify that this is actually coming from PEG funding, which is public education government funding. And those are franchise fees that are paid to the city on behalf of Spectrum and it can only be used by the Media Relations Department, so it's not coming from the general fund.
Okay.
Great. All right, any other discussion?
No, sir.
And I just wanna say, I know you all, the media department, I know y'all are always hauling a lot of big equipment and all that, so definitely y'all need an SUV for that type of equipment, so thank you. And I'm looking forward to see you on the streets on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item C is consider authorizing purchase of forty-six Dell devices from Dell through the Department of Information Resources contracts in the amount of forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is consider approval of renewal of AutoMox Cloud Patch Management System from SHI Government Solutions through Omnia Partners IT Solutions for an amount of fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item E is to consider approving the agreement between the city of Edinburgh and Exter Play for the design equipment and installation of all-inclusive playground equipment for Desa Vala Park in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. The only thing I will say as far as discussion, I wanna thank again our precinct board commissioner, Ellie I wanna thank again our uh precinct board commissioner, Ellie Torres, who is contributing these funds to ensure that this happens, so uh thank you to Commissioner Torres. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, uh motion carries. Item F is to consider authorizing the purchase installation of two new pre-manufactured bridges for the Ebony Hills Golf Course from Reno Works Facility Solutions through the TIPS contract in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, excuse me, four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve, discussion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh I just wanna know if this is the either the least expensive material that we can use, or is it the most expensive, and is there was other options that we could have had for the bridge?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Please forgive me, my voice is a little hoarse today. Uh Tom Blaine, Assistant City Manager. Uh yes, sir, this was one of them that the quickest that we could find. Uh they're prefabricated bridges, and usually the prefabricated bridges are a steel structure, so that cost uh that was an average cost. This was the less expensive that I found for those uh steel structure uh prefabricated bridges.
What are the lengths gonna be of the bridge?
What was that, sir?
What's the length?
Uh they're about uh I think it's twelve feet, and they have to be outside of the new concrete barriers of the um of the new canal. Uh so once we get this approved, I submit the engineering plans for the for the piers, uh send those to the irrigation district, uh so they can give us a formal approval. I do have approval from the board on the bridges and the locations. All they need to see is the pier foundation and the engineering design, but we won't be able to do that until we award the project.
And where are the funds gonna come for this project?
Uh the funds are from the twenty eighteen bond series for the Ebony Hills Golf uh improvement, golf course improvement. It's a total of a million dollars that we did have, which we paid for the master plan, and now the bridges. Uh I will come back hopefully next week or the or the first meeting in July to present the master plan and to get your direction on which projects that we will be able to fund with the remaining funds on that area.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. And what's the timeline on this? By when uh do they expect it to be installed?
Yes, sir. It takes about three to four months for them to be fabricated and shipped. During that time, the contractor's gonna be doing the piers, so we're hoping to have everything installed uh within five to six months of the project.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um we have a motion and a second. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion approved. Um we have item G is to consider awarding RFP number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine group employee benefit products and authorize city manager negotiate and enter into an agreement. Counsel? Is there any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve uh RJG Retirement Services?
Second.
Um, well, I believe uh this is has to do with a group employee benefit products. This is uh RFP twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. Um I don't believe that. This has to do with our group employee benefits.
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend. Well, hang on a second, so, excuse me. So there was motion, second, but I don't believe it's for this item. Is that correct?
If if the maker of the motion agrees, it can be withdrawn.
We're in item uh G, RFP number.
The H H is the agent of H H is the agent of record.
Yeah, 'cause the motion is not applied to this item, so.
I understand.
So do I need to accept?
Yeah, make a motion to withdraw.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to withdraw. Okay, so we have a motion now to with uh suspend the rules uh at this time. Is there a second to suspend the rules? This is just to allow us to have discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right, second, to suspend the rules. This is just to allow, okay, so you I guess you wanna have some discussion, sir. Go ahead.
This is what we're talking about. Is it right now, we're we're looking at about the uh I'm looking at.
On your mic, chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess. It's Blue Cross Blue Shield we're with now. This is the right one we're thinking of, right?
This RFP or the agenda item that we're talking about is RFP twenty twenty-three oh nine, and this is regarding group employee benefit products, and that includes the medical product, and the current provider is Blue Cross Blue Shield.
The question is, right now, it's for an HMO, right? What if we wanna go to PPO?
Our current plans are we offer, or the the plan offers an HMO and a PPO plan.
What if I wanna go straight to PPO plan?
Um we do have uh the option available. What I'd like to do is present our our Ortega One insurance, our insurance consultant. She'll provide a be a brief summary of our current utilization and the evaluation process and the recommendation.
And before that happens, can we just answer that question? 'Cause I guess, so the answer is yes.
The answer is yes, the option is available.
That is available, obviously for an additional cost.
Yes.
Right, and so um so the answer is yes at this time, but go ahead.
I think she may answer most of your questions, but we'll we'll be glad to ask any additional questions. Uh Ms. Ivan Ortega?
And and I understand, chief, where you're coming from. I know um
Yeah, maybe I'm in the.
I'm familiar with, I guess, the insurance being provided. I think historically uh the employees used to get one plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so.
Um, starting October first, excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh October first of twenty twenty is when the city moved from a single PPO plan to a dual option plan, which would be the base plan or the low plan being the HMO that's paid at a hundred percent for the employee, and the buy-up plan being the PPO, which the employee currently pays nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents a month for.
Yeah. And and I guess maybe uh go ahead, chief, you had a question, but I had a question now as a result of that. Um I'll allow you to.
I was just trying to, you know what, eventually I'd like to make a motion or a motion appear the, you know, the Blue Cross and Blue go with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield for medical for our for.
Well, that that's what's on the, yes, sir.
Up under the PPO, everybody gets PPO.
So I guess that's maybe a question for you all.
If I may, sir, uh that's part of my presentation, but I can get just to that. So in order uh because you're fully insured, and right now you have a loss ratio, which is the premiums paid versus claims paid out by the carrier, Blue Cross, is at four ninety-four point one percent. You have nineteen claims over twenty-five thousand equalling about one-point-five million, six of those over a hundred thousand, and the majority are gonna be ongoing. So those are part of the factors that are that will equal what the um proposals were submitted. I did ask Blue Cross Blue Shield for just the PPO option. That increase would be an estimated one-point-two million to the city's current budget and a rate increase of nineteen percent to the employees for because for the dependent coverage. So it's a significant budget increase for the city to go to that option right now. That can that can be looked at next year when your loss ratio, when the claims go down, then it'd be more affordable to switch over, but at this time, that would be what it would cost the city.
Okay, but it would cost the the employee nineteen?
Increase for the dependents, yes.
Oh, that's for the dependents, not so much.
No, because employee only will still be at no cost.
Well, that's.
The city increases.
That's what we're looking at.
Well, that's a big hit to the the employees too, because right now our family, how much do we charge for family? Family plan, we're just without spouse, 'cause it's like four hundred bucks with spouse, one fifty without spouse family, or something like that.
Right now for the PPO is four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, well, yes, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents for the employee and family on the PPO plan.
And just and just children?
Just children is at one-seventy-five sixty.
So you're saying that that number would go up nineteen percent?
Yes.
Or was it the HMO number would go?
And all because we're going to PPO, that's is that?
Because the premiums go up, so the premiums for the employees.
But the the four ninety-three fifty-nine, is that a PPO, the PPO that's now, or the HMO?
Yes, no, that's a PPO.
So what's the HMO?
The HMO for family coverage right now?
Yes.
Uh that's at four sixty-five thirty-nine. It's just slightly lower.
So which one's gonna go up nineteen percent?
The PPO only plan.
So we're gonna add nineteen percent is what, twenty-four, a hundred bucks? A little less than a hundred dollars?
Yes.
Right, for a family? And if we leave it the way it is, if we leave it with an HMO and and PPO, how much does it go up?
So the employees, uh it would go up for the employee-only rate for the PPO. It would go from nineteen seventy-one to twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents, which is a dollar-fifty a month increase.
Yeah, that's if we do the do the do the dual.
Yes, sir. Do what's recommended for this.
Okay, and how much would the HMO go up?
Uh the HMO.
We have, we have, obviously, we're gonna have employees on both. Some are some will buy it up and some, you know, can only afford to stay with the lower side, so I'd like to know where.
So for the, just to give you and I, just to let you know, um what utilization or people who are on the plan, right now you have three-hundred-and-sixty on the PPO employee only, sorry, uh HMO employee only. You have three-hundred-and-sixty-nine on the buy-up PPO. You have thirty-nine uh on the HMO for uh employing children, a hundred-and-forty on the PPO for employing children. You have eighteen on the HMO for uh for the HMO for spouse, thirty-one for uh PPO. You have eight for family on the HMO and fifty-eight for family on the PPO. So five-hundred-and-ninety-seven employees are on the PPO, three-hundred-and-seventy-one are on the uh HMO. And what assists the employee at this time having a dual option is those that want to save what the HMO can, but because your city ordinance um has the employer, the city paying fifty-two-point-three percent of the premium for the children and family for both the the HMO and PPO, and sixty-three-point-ninety-eight percent for both for employing spouse for both, the HMO, PPO, that offsets the cost to the employees.
Because of the way it is structured?
Yes, sir.
Right.
And and did we have, ooh, did we have like a a city organization or city employee group or anybody analyze this and employee survey, what everybody'd like to see? 'Cause as an employee in the past, and we've been through it, uh you know, we always gonna we're always we're always gonna get the city council raise, or the insurance went up, we got a three percent raise, but we got eighteen percent raise in our insurance. As an employee, that's what we'd always hear and all that stuff, but they didn't realize that the numbers are totally different, but.
Right, so we do have our engagement committee. Um the engagement committee did not participate in valuation of the RFPs because we hired a a a consultant firm to to do that for us. Um we did conduct a survey uh amongst the the city employees, and I can share those results with you. Um.
Do employees wanna see an HMO or PPO? 'Cause really where I'm headed.
Let me.
And.
So pretty much, uh I'll give you just a quick.
But on the on this group too, do we have a bunch of different incomes, or we have the higher paid staff on this committee, or is it, do we have a good range?
The ability is uh various uh various employees with different levels of um of of supervision, non-supervision amongst uh different departments.
Okay.
And so we rotate that committee.
From labor to skill to to management?
Right.
And okay.
So let me give you a quick summary of the results. Um we had, we had over eighty percent satisfied with the current packages with the city of Edinburgh as far as what the city of Edinburgh offers. Uh we asked if they're satisfied with coverage of prescription medications through our current medical provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh we had satisfactory results, which were at almost sixty percent. Uh we asked if the benefit package met the family's needs or the employee and their family's needs. Seventy-seven percent agreed. Uh deductible rates are reasonable. We had about close to forty percent, and thirty-three neither agreed nor disagreed. And then we also asked, are you satisfied with the current network of doctors and hospitals through Blue Cross? Eighty-seven percent agreed or are satisfied. Are you satisfied with co-pays? Uh fifty-eight percent were satisfied. And then we did ask if there's satisfaction as far as the deductible deductibles for the medical medical plan, and we had a total of forty percent agree or satisfied. Thirty-two did not agree nor disagree. Um but overall, the evaluation or or the summary of the survey, uh the employees are satisfied. The offering the HMO and the PPO plan to our employees gives them the option. We have the the single uh employee who is seeking just the basic plans. Um and then we have our family, our employees with families or medical needs that are uh seeking the PPO or a richer plan. So in by with our current structure or current plans, um it gives the employees opportunity to decide which plan they want. And if we have um, you know, those employees with HMO, it it saves the city costs both on the employee at the employer's side. So I know that uh historically, the last uh prior to twenty-twenty up until maybe about twenty-ten estimated time, um we we had a PPO plan only. There was uh prior to that in the history, we had HMO plan only. So I think it's just based on the proposal piece, 'cause when we went with TML.
We 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 had it when we had Certus too, remember Certus when bankrupt?
Yeah. TML and Certus, we had HMO only plan. So we we've held the PPO plan for a while. Uh the decision to decide the the decision to move to a a HMO and PPO uh combination is uh was due to the um the utilization and loss ratio in twenty-twenty was pretty high. So uh the city management and then the city council made a decision to offer two plans at that time, you know, would save the city uh some money and some tax dollars, so we considered that and offered both plans.
Okay, and so what's the increase if we go with what's recommended today? What's the increase on the two for the employee?
Okay.
That would be my next question. What's the raise for, what's the increase?
So the increase for the employee.
What's recommended right now?
What's recommended right now is to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. However, in order to lower the rate, initially it was at twelve-point-four percent because of the high utilization, if we bundle, which means move dental and vision over to Blue Cross, you already have medical there and you have the basic life and supplemental with them. So if you move dental and vision over, which are at a higher decrease in rates to the employees than the current plan, uh then it would be at seven-point-six percent with a one-time uh credit that they would give the city of two-hundred-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, and that offsets the employer's percentage uh to about five percent. So the budget through your finance office would be about a four-hundred-and-eighty-dollar increase and to the employees, again, for the employee-only buy-up, instead of nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents, it would only increase a dollar-fifty a month, not paycheck. Uh I believe you're uh bi-weekly.
Okay, so if we do it that way, and we change everything over to Blue Cross, like you'd like to see, but like right now, I think our dentals with Delta, Delta Dental?
Yes.
So how's that gonna affect the our employees if we switch them from uh Delta Dental to Blue Cross Blue Shield, the ones that already have them worked on, and how does how does that affect the ones that are under braces?
But there's a coordination of benefits that are done when you switch over to carriers. Uh there's a lower impact with dental and vision than it is when you switch for medical by far. So with dental, um it's a fifteen percent rate increase in savings and the benefits, decrease, sorry, and the benefits, uh there's no plan changes to the benefits.
Well, no, I'm more worried about the 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 employee right now who's got their kids getting braces or something of that nature, and we switch from Delta Dental, and we switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield, how are they gonna be affected? Is one gonna, are they gonna still cover the same coverage, or are they gonna find out now, hey, the city changed, now I owe another three-hundred extra dollars for my?
It would be the same coverage with the same limitations, 'cause there's no plan changes.
So there's no plan change?
No, sir.
And just going to, okay. So just, and I'm sorry, I know you just mentioned it to the uh Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
On the uh on the increase. So if we stay as is, it's how much uh an increase, a dollar something for employees?
Dollar fifty for um the PPO plan right now.
The family plan?
Uh no, for the employee-only plan.
Okay, but what about for the family plan? Uh I'm talking about like just, let's say the council approves what's being recommended.
We're worried like I am about what the employee's gonna pay, not not the.
Well, of course. I mean, the employees are number one in my mind. I mean, I I just, I know, and I'm a little bit familiar, having worked here, you've worked here too, and um we used to just have one plan, and um I would like to go back to that at some point. Right now, we're already, we went out for bids, and I just feel that, you know, the employees uh have always been covered at a hundred percent. You know, there's never been, at least from what I remember, options where they have to pay up. Um I know it's a cost to the city, but I think it's um, you know, worth us, you know, uh accounting for that as we always have. And um and I understand there was changes made in twenty-twenty, I can appreciate that, but I I just feel that um we need to prioritize that.
So the employee and family rate will increase forty dollars a month?
Okay, so if just if we uh um just approve what is being recommended, that's what y'all are saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I'm still lost. Is it forty dollars a month to the employee or to the city?
To the employee.
To the.
That was.
What's a percentage on average of that increase?
It comes out to about nine percent, but in dollars, it's not as significant. Like I said, the employee only is a dollar fifty.
No, yeah, but I was talking about family plan.
Yes, it's forty dollars.
Forty dollars for the family plan.
Yeah.
And we do the family plan, and you go just to straight PPO, it's gonna go up. And we do the family plan, and you go just a straight PPO, it's going to go up around?
Right.
Ninety-eight bucks?
A lot more, yeah.
Yes. The employing children goes up sixteen dollars, and employing spouse goes up twenty-six dollars a month.
I'm good, thank you, mayor.
All right, any, any other questions? There's no motions on the floor at this time, so is there any motions or any additional questions?
Yeah, let's, let's go with the way we're being recommended, with Blue Cross Blue Shield as the medical, and is that advantageous for us to put Blue Cross Blue Shield as dental?
Yes sir.
And?
Visual.
And we have vision.
Vision.
And the basic life and.
Basic term life also.
Does it go under Blue Cross Blue Shield, all of them?
Yes, the basic life and supplemental are already with Blue Cross, well, Dearborn National, which is their section of the.
We're just putting a bolt.
Okay, so is that a motion, sir?
Yes.
I'll second.
Is there a second, a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, thank you.
Yes sir.
Motion approved. Item H is consider awarding RFQ number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, agent of record, and authorize city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement.
Make a motion to approve RJG Retirement Services?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RJG Retirement, any discussion? If not, all's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion approved. Moving on to contractuals, consider authorizing city manager to execute advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for the U.S. Highway North two eighty-one Water Distribution System Improvements.
So move.
Second, a motion and a second, all's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B is consider authorizing city manager to enter an agreement with Hanson Professional Services based on RFQ number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three semi-annual compliance monitoring reporting for the landfill.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen is appointments, council, I believe we have one alternate under.
Board of Adjustments.
Zoning Board of Adjustments.
I'd like to appoint Alexandra Rodriguez, as she's the only one that applied.
We have a motion to appoint Alexandra Rodriguez, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion carries. Council, we have consent agenda, one, item A, minutes for your consideration. Any motions to approve consent? We have a motion?
Discussion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, with discussion.
Okay, we have a second, go ahead, sir.
I just want to make sure, clarify, is the city going to be closed on Monday the third, or are we going to be open Monday the third?
The city is open on July the third, but closed on July the fourth.
So they're going to have just the weekend off, and then work Monday, and then off the fourth again?
That is correct.
Hadn't we done in the past where they take two days?
I, I do not recall.
I just want to make sure before.
Than having two days for July fourth.
Just out of curiosity, why don't we go to Wednesday? Because anybody wants to take the long weekend, they take the vacation together, they get Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
That's an option.
Or can we just cancel it completely, if we don't have nothing on the agenda?
Do you guys have any problem with going to Wednesday?
No, I actually think most people celebrate Fourth of July at midnight.
I'd like to withdraw my motion and change it.
Can we, can we just do without it, if we don't have nothing on the agenda?
Well, we always have items, but that's up to you all, but, okay, you're going to withdraw our motion?
We have, we have the first meeting in, there's going to be the voluntary products, first meeting in July, which would be this, so I'd like to change my motion to change it to the Wednesday.
So you withdraw your motion, and you have any motion for the fifth?
To the, make it to Wednesday the fifth.
We, we can do that, council, okay? So a motion to have the meeting on the fifth?
Thursday? Oh, Wednesdays, can we do Thursday, guys?
Yeah, I'll do the sixth, Thursday.
Okay, Thursday.
Six, because remember, Councilman Garcia has his church services that day.
All right, so.
I don't have any problem, I don't have any confidence.
So we have a motion for?
Thursday the sixth.
July, July sixth?
I'll second.
We have a second, are we, I guess, a planning and zoning, any advertisements that we have to worry about on this, or not, for this first meeting? I just want to make sure. No, we don't, okay, we have an advertising, okay. All right, all's in favor of the motion to move the meeting to July sixth, Thursday, raise your right hand. All's opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, other business, any future agenda items that council would like to see with our city manager?
Not like.
If there's not, we'll move on to item seventeen, council, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive.
So move. Before we go, mayor, I'm just going to let everybody know, I'm going to excuse myself for executive session, I don't feel well.
That's fine.
Been dragging the whole time.
No problem, sir, thank you, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all's in favor, please raise your right hand. All's opposed, we are moving into executive session, and it's now seven fourteen PM.
Pop a chico, drop me through.